We get started with the agenda portion of the meeting. The time following the agenda will be the public portion. I'll ask everybody to please turn off their cell phones and put them on vibrator. We have minutes from December 21st, December 28th, and January 4th. Orders is on second reading. O dash 071109 is amended by Resolution R dash O dash 071109. Orders to amend or supplement, advised under orders to the City of Brooklyn Chapter 840, solid waste collection and disposal will be held. We've been in discussions with Rutgers. We have something I just saw today. We're pretty much, they agreed to a lot of things we had spoken about previously. There are a couple of things we have to go back to then to talk about and get ironed out and then get an agreement in place, but it's moving along very well. O dash 081106 in order to vacate a portion of Comstock Street, Delvede Street, the City of Brooklyn. This as well as being held, trying to get some information from the attorney representing the vendor or contractor on that job. O dash 121101 is amended by R dash 0, excuse me, O dash 121101 dash 1. In order to amend and supplement, advised under orders to the City of Brooklyn Chapter 10 dot 36 Bicycle Regulations.
Your mandatory resolution, there's only these penalties which you approved. Everything else in the last meeting, we're not happy with the penalties.
Orders is on first reading. O dash 011201 in order to amend and supplement, advised under orders to the City of Brooklyn Traffic Control Regulations, loading zone, add one loading zone on New Street. O dash 011202 in order to amend and supplement, advised under orders to the City of Brooklyn Taxi Stairs. O dash 011203 in order to amend and supplement, advised under orders to the City of Brooklyn Traffic and Parking, delete and add handicap parking zones and add handicap parking space delete one residential handicap parking zone at 5 Freeman Street. Add one residential handicap parking zone at 5 Freeman. These are two different platform numbers which goes over a person. And add one residential handicap parking space at 104 Redmond Street. O dash 011204 in order to amend and supplement, advised under orders to the City of Brooklyn Department of Police to create or reinstate the auxiliary police. Resolutions R dash 011241 approve agenda amendments. Forty-two approve payroll from 12/23/2011 through January 6th, 2012. Forty-three is being pulled, request to the city clerk. Forty-four authorized refund for the decaf sales for turkeys. We have some further reorganization matters. Forty-five authorized professional service agreement, William Hamilton City Attorney, PSA for 2012, not to exceed $50,000. Forty-six authorized professional service agreement, Charlie Gaden Assistant City Attorney, PSA for 2012, not to exceed $30,000. Forty-seven authorized professional service agreement with Wash Zucker Hatfield. 2012 Labor Council not to exceed $25,000.
Counsel President, I thought I was able to say here that the numbers you're going to see in the rest of these are what we expect for the year. The numbers for this meeting and myself are just the amount that's geared to the temporary budget and we might, in the course of the year, go for more than that. This is the way we do it, given the fact we've only got a three-month budget at this point in time, but I don't want to mislead anyone.
Forty-eight is being held in Brooklyn, requested by the city administrator. Forty-nine authorized professional service agreement to Raritan Animal Hospital for Veterinary Services for 2012, not to exceed $3,000. Fifty authorized professional service agreement, Ogul, Longo, Moran, Dunston, Dugas, Special Counsel for Tax Appeals in 2012, not to exceed $40,000. Fifty-one authorized professional service agreement with Dechesco, Dave and Cooley, Yoseph and Crumson Davis and Laird Conflict Counsel for Tax Appeals, not to exceed $5,000, January 1st, 2012, and December 31st, 2012. Fifty-two authorized professional service agreement with BRD Valuation Consulting Services, Real Property Appraisal Services for Tax Appeals in 2012, not to exceed $40,000. Fifty-three authorized professional service agreement, Realty Appraisal Company, Property and Service Services, Tax Assessor in 2012, not to exceed $10,000. Fifty-four professional service agreements, Geo Decisions for Tax Map Maintenance and GIS Maintenance Services in 2012, $40,000. Fifty-five professional service agreement with Spatial Data Logic Maintenance and Support Services for Municipal Software for Division of Tax Assessment, 2012, not to exceed $12,000. Fifty-six is being held. Fifty-seven is being held. Fifty-eight authorized professional service agreement, First Bike Corporation, for Tax Order, Store Billing and Collection Software Maintenance and Support Services, 2012, not to exceed $26,290. Fifty-nine professional service agreement, Act of Mount McDonald, 2012, Support Engineering and Support Services for Water Utility, not to exceed $90,000. Sixty award professional service agreement, Remington, Varnick, and Vena Engineering Site Inspections for Approved Site Plans, January 1st through December 31st, 2012, as funded by Esco Account. Sixty-one professional service agreement with Williams, Goldman, and Spitzer, 2012 Bond Counsel. Sixty-two authorized professional service agreement, Samuel Klein Company Municipal Auditor, 2012, not to exceed $87,125. Sixty-three another professional service agreement, Vital Communication for Computer Services for Tax Assessor, 2012, not to exceed $19,500. That ends the reorganization matters. Sixty-four approved request for city property, requested by Tau Kappa Epsilon Fraternity for Bugalo Park and Pavilion, a 5K race to benefit Alzheimer's Association and St. Jude's Children's Hospital, March 25th, 10:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Sixty-five is being held, requested by city attorney. Sixty-six approved chamber order number one for Orchid Holden, upgrade sidewalk intersection for current federal ADA standards plus additional traffic control costs, not to exceed $16,814, the increase not over 20% of the original contract. Sixty-seven approved chamber order number eight, can help videos construction, addition to the Henry Guest House for the New Brunswick Public Library, remove and replace a 4-gallon water heater, not to exceed $1,200. Sixty-eight approved amendment, Resolution R dash 081155, an additional $2,717 for staff shirts for the Division of Recreation and the Hope Teen Center with all colors, again, this increase is not over 20% of the original contract. Sixty-nine approved amendment of Resolution R dash 121155, ahead language for reauthorization to rebid for the interpreters from the municipal court. Seventy through award of contract for 12 months with Carnoust Line, General Chemical Corporation, Newborn USA, and George S. Coin Chemical Company, furnishing delivery of chemicals for bulk feed facilities, February 1st, 2012, and January 31st, 2013, not to exceed $760,434. Seventy-one approved award of contract for 12 months with Absolute Fire Protection Company, fire engine pump repair services, January 19th, 2012, to January 18th, 2013, not to exceed $20,000. Seventy-two authorized purchase by Division of Fire Safety and Housing Inspection for radio accessories, Motorola Company for nine radios and accessories, not to exceed $11,256.44. Seventy-three authorized lease of copy machine for purchasing department under state contract for 48 months lease for Icon Office Solution, one Rico officio copy machine, $103 cents per month. Seventy-four approved award of contract with Brooklyn Uniform Supply for Work Uniform Groups Only for Public Works, not to exceed $5,607. Seventy-five authorized resolution to rescind Resolution R dash 121144, make order contract for rock salt with Atlantic Salt for rock salt, approximately 11 months beginning on January 19th, 2012, and ending on the Thursday, 2012, not to exceed $79,500, the Mill 6 County Cooperative Purchasing Program. Seventy-six authorized resolution to rescind Resolution R dash 21163, make order contract for janitorial supplies with Camden Bag and Paper Company for $57,360.89, Scholz Forshine Industries, $2,077.20, Central Poly Corporation for $6,449.90 for 12 months, beginning January 19th through 12th, January 19th, 2013. Seventy-seven approved request for use of city property and closure of streets, request by CGI Racing, Bugalo Park Seminary Place in various streets for a half marathon race Sunday, April 17th, 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the park, 8:00 a.m. Saturday, April 21st, 2012, 4:00 p.m. Sunday. What's the closure for that time, that time period? That's a day.
Sunday?
Yes.
Saturday they're closing to set up and Sunday they close. They close from Saturday afternoon all the way to Sunday to the end of the race and the use of the park is for Sunday only. As it reads here, it says April 17th, 2011, if that's not the right.
Okay.
The resolution is to be currently permitted.
The street closure of George Street, Flank Hill, and College Avenue to finish on seminary place. Seventy-eight approved request for use of city property, requested by Rutgers, Phil Ellis, Location Bugalo Park and Pavilion for a 5K Run to Walk and One Iowa Run to Walk Sunday, April 29th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Seventy-nine approved request for use of city property, request by American Cancer Fund, ULO Park Pavilion for a 5K Run to Increase Cancer Awareness, Saturday, May 5th, 7:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Eighty approved request for street closure, request by Rutgers State University, Seminary Place between George and College Avenue for road closure in conjunction with reunion parade and celebration, which is held on Rutgers property, buses and antique vehicles will park in Seminary Place. Saturday, May 12th, 11:15 to 12:15, Location Summers Street, College Avenue, and Seminary Place. Eighty-one approved request for use of city property, request by the Pentecostal Council Church of God, One Memorial Park for Religious Advent with speakers singing and musical instruments, Saturday, September 23rd, 2012, and Saturday, September 22nd, 3:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Eighty-two approved request for use of city property, American Cancer Fund. Is this a new P of the 79, 20 chance?
It's not a D, it's different.
Oh, no D, I'm sorry. For a, ULO Park and Pavilion, other 5K race to increase cancer awareness, Saturday, July 14th, 7:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Eighty-three approved request for use of city property, request by the Pentecostal Council Church of God, Joyce Kilmer Park, Religious Advent Speakers Singing and Musical Instruments, Saturday, July 28th, from 3:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Counsel, if I had a request, I could maybe there's been concern really the past year about noise in some of the neighborhoods, some of the fuel and the problem with the sound amplification a lot, let us know when you have a plan or resolution.
Eighty-four approved request for use of city property, request by the Pentecostal Council Church of God, Feast of Park for Religious Advent Speakers Singing and Musical Instruments, Saturday, August 25th, November 7th.
This is the park that's sensitive to amplification, has been the past year.
Eighty-five approved request for city property, request Foster Adopt the Family Services Foundation, ULO Park Pavilion and Bandstand Fifth Statewide Walk to Raise Awareness of the Issue Dealing with Foster Care and Adopt on Sunday, October 28th, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Eighty-six approved request for city property, request by Elijah Crumbs, ULO Park and Pavilion for Turkey Truck, 3K Walk, 5K Run, Sunday, excuse me, November 4th, the rain date of Sunday, November 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Eighty-seven authorized advertising receipt of bids, request by the Department of Public Works for one 2012 sanitation truck. Eighty-eight approved RASP for Licensed Off Firm Sisters Court, pointing to special advocates in New Jersey. Eighty-nine approved appointment of Betsy Garlotti to the Brooklyn Community Food Alliance. Ninety approved emergency temporary appropriations for 2012. Ninety-one approved transfer of appropriation reserves, 2011, Mr. Butler. Ninety-two approved refund of sidewalk permit overpayment to Adelino Construction. Ninety-three approved resolution to refund Esco to Genesco Building Corporation, now Ninety-four referral to planning board of a study to determine shelter.
I think our words spoke with weather.
Weather makes sense. Weather, is this the seminary place? Okay, so this is locked through. Seminary meets the criteria for designation, not necessarily need a redevelopment. Ninety-five approved request for street closure and relaxation of noise ordinance, Raritan Construction Company, train placement, Somerset Street between High Street and Harmon Bridge Street, February 4th. Alternate dates will be February 11th and February 18th, in time 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Ninety-six authorized tax collector, transfer over payments on several tax order and store accounts. Ninety-seven authorized refund to LPS due to duplicate payment in the amount of $480. Ninety-eight authorized refund to US Bank for Pro Capital on dividends in the amount of Ninety-nine approved amendment.
This is been done previously, it's not here in Europe.
This one?
Yes.
Ninety-seven?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, yes. Although I'm doing that, so that'll be, I guess, ninety-nine is being pulled. One hundred approved easement of, for John Khalid, which I'm not sure if this is full C cap somewhere.
Yeah, what are they gonna do, replace, approve the street that's called, uh, parks.
One oh one approved request for street closure and relaxation of noise ordinance for glass of trucking for train placement, Church Street between Spring and George, Saturday, January 28th, alternate date February 4th and February 11th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. One oh two authorized release of performance barn balancing inspection fees to JLS Professional for 50,000. Ninety-two thousand four hundred thirty dollars. One oh three approved request for street closure and relaxation of noise ordinance for loyalty contracting, another crane placement, Patterson Street between George and Nielsen, January 21st and January 28th, and February 4th, an alternate date of February 11th, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. One oh four authorized request for street closure, road closure, request by Garden State Track Club from College Avenue, Secar Street, Senior Street, Martin Street, for the Civil War Road Mile, One Mile Run, Sunday, June 10th, 90 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. One oh five approved request for use of city property and closure of streets for the Veterans Lines of Ratten Valley from Monmouth Square and Braggard Streets for Memorial Day Parade and Opening Ceremony Monday, May 28th, 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Street closures, Williams Avenue, Williams, George, Albany, then to, hopefully that's it without a delay. That's not it?
Captain.
Public portion of meeting will now be on order of the Department, it's called a roll.
Councilmember Cook is absent. Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi?
Present.
Council President Racine?
Here.
Please advise that the No requirements to the Open Public Meeting Act event complires and satisfying the annual notice which gives efficient notice and time and place in conduct of all public meetings, with the municipal council of City of Brooklyn filed with the city clerk, placed on the Prop 801 in the lobby of City Hall, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of Brooklyn, being the Honorable Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for those who lost their lives in the conflicts in the Middle East. Yeah, minutes from December 21st, December 28th, and January 4th. Have they motioned except a minute?
Second.
Loaf call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes, but I have a question. I was saying it before, so can I understand that one?
And you don't have to.
Okay, I don't have a question, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Racine?
Aye.
Orders is on second reading. O dash 071109 is amended by R dash O dash 071109 dash 1 is being held, the date certain, second reading, then we're, according to. O dash 081106 in order to vacate a portion of Comstock Street, Delvede Street is also being held, although I think I'd like to just take it off.
Wednesday, February 15th, it's the second reading.
That's for the first, for the solid waste collection disposal. The second one, I want you to just pull it and move it, put it up when it comes around, I don't keep seeing it, okay? Until it's ready. O dash 121101 is amended by R dash O dash 121101 dash 1, in order to amend and supplement, advised under orders to the City of Brooklyn Chapter 10 dot 36 Bicycle Regulations. Anybody wish to comment on this ordinance?
Just the amendments, right.
You do?
Yeah.
The resolution. Okay, can you tell amendments on the penalties?
Yes. The penalties would be fifty dollars for, up to fifty dollars per first violation, for second, a hundred dollars for third, not less than.
I have, I won't interrupt, but I thought I'd read on twenty-five, fifteen, and twenty-five first, fifty second, and a hundred third, and that's within the one year that we, I thought we discussed.
Maybe the wrong one that caught, did you dispose the, of Mr. Patterson's and all the others?
Right, and you have a couple of suggestions, and that one was, was the lesser.
What do you want?
Twenty-five dollars first, fifty second, a hundred third, all within the first, in a, occur within the first year, and that's part of.
Put that line, you were already meeting, and second, you said, that's, that must have been committed within one year of the proceeding.
Okay. Act on that, now, so.
The motion?
Yes, motion.
Wash do approve?
Second.
Loaf call.
Tell me. Councilmember Egan?
It's part of the, it's.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
Now on to your orders, Mr. Rehman.
Charles, from the office, I think you were improper. I think I was entitled to speak on the resolution before you passed it.
You have to speak now.
Well, can you clarify? I'm not sure exactly what the, I heard enough, a couple of numbers go back and forth.
Twenty-five dollars for first, minus fifty for second, a hundred for the third, all occurring within the same year.
What about a fourth?
It'll stay at a hundred, I believe.
So it's a hundred for any, third or subsequent, within one year of the commission or of the date of the conviction?
Commission.
Commission. Would this require a court appearance, or can you mail it in?
Up to the court.
It's up to the court?
Yes.
And they have guidelines from the office, the ministry of most courts, it's more than a day of, of course.
I do not believe that they cover bicycle infractions.
They cover our urgency.
Well, I seen, I'm trying to remember what it was. You passed another ordinance not too long ago where you indicated that the court appearance was mandatory.
I don't see that here.
I'm sorry?
Doesn't say, it doesn't say here.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is that, don't you think that you can amend it to make sure that a court appearance is not required for riding a bicycle on the street?
I think it would be necessary for us.
I gave, Mr. Racine, I gave you a rather extensive copy of the penalties and violations and fines that motor vehicle imposes, and the majority of the, for careless driving, others are, you know, not even amended, court appearance, a fifty-four dollar fine, you mail it in, you're done with it.
Sally, can we conclude that a court appearance is not necessary and mail it in, or is that issue you want to do?
Yeah, we had to move it back to the amended process, because now you're on the orders. Well, Mr. Racine, if I may, you could amend the fines tonight, you could certainly amend the payment of the fines tonight.
Well, I just said, Mr. Racine. So do we do the resolution to amend, same resolution?
We landed in here that a court appearance is not required.
That's, okay. Do we need to?
I have one other question, I'm not sure. When this first came up, and the second time it came up, and perhaps it wasn't possible as a third time as well, I got the sense of the council, and clearly from you, Mr. Racine, that you favored imposing this in the downtown area, but not imposing it citywide, and that you were going to look into amending the order test.
It was the downtown area and French Street business area, and not citywide for age group. Downtown's completely banned, 12 years and younger can ride on sidewalks in neighborhoods, but not adults.
So if you're over 12 years old, that's late, you can't ride on sidewalks anywhere in the city.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying, is that I got the impression from you that you were just going to limit the violations of the downtown area and French Street, and now you've expanded it to cover the entire.
No, that's what it wasn't before.
I know that's what it was before, but you, you spoke as city council president, and then informally with me, indicating that you favorite imposing it downtown and French Street, but not on the entire city.
I have complete ban in downtown and French Street, they're always on sidewalks.
I understand that, but you, you stated on the record, I believe, and we can, we now have tape, so maybe we can go back and check it. It doesn't really matter, because you, you always will change your mind if I'm correct, and if I'm not correct, then I've been attending some other city council meeting besides Brooklyn. So this is citywide, anybody over the age of 12 can't ride bike anywhere? Okay. You know, before you, before you pass the other amendment, you know that I oppose it? I think it's horrendous, I think that it's outrageous that you do this. I think that there are many areas of the city where it is unsafe to ride on the roadway for bicyclists. I think that you're going to impose traffic regulations on bicyclists and one-way streets. We have a lot of one-way streets, up and down hills. You're going to require bicyclists to go around the block and hold the wet or rainy weather on the roadways, rather than cut, you know, three houses down to go to their own homes or whatever it might be. I think it's not very well thought out, and I think that you, you should have really given it more consideration for those of us who ride bikes. I'm sorry you're speaking over me, I couldn't hear you.
I said, I just really did not mean thought out a lot of what was put into it, so I disagree on this in the afternoon beginning, so I respect your opinion, seriously.
Well, it's good to know, I wish it was taken more heavily under consideration. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name of the address, please.
Yes, sir, nowhere in Elche, I prefer not to give my address. I've been with this committee before, I've already explained why I prefer not to give my own address. In support of this gentleman, I submitted actually a detailed letter outlining all the reasons why myself, as well as other concerned members of this committee, object to the bike ordinance. And while I respectfully request that the council reviews my letter and give me a written response to the issues that I raised, I would just like to state that in support of what this gentleman said, one, it's unconstitutional to treat people's inalienable rights as though they were state or city granted privileges. Driving is called a privilege, riding a bike down the sidewalk is not a privilege, it's an inalienable right. So you can't treat people's rights as though they are privileges that you can grant anytime you feel and prohibit anytime you feel. That's in direct violation of the Constitution, and you would be actually setting the city up, making them liable for lawsuits, and people would be held liable for that. That wouldn't be intelligent, that's not well thought out, no disrespect to the council, but I don't see this being well thought out, it could have to be the constitutional issue. Also, even with lowering, changing from the other. Um, also, even with lowering, changing from the, the other, uh, fee structure to now the present fee structure, I agree with this gentleman again, it's still not fair. And you're actually attaching motor vehicle statutes to riding a bike, and a bike is not a motor vehicle, so you can't classify it as a motor vehicle, nor attach statute to ordinances to it, penalties and fines to it, that are relegated only to a motor vehicle. So you're violating the law when you do that, I, I don't know where you're getting this information from, that it is allowable, lawful, but it's actually unlawful, it's in direct violation of the Constitution, and there, I can guarantee you, there will be consequences for anyone who is knowledgeable of their constitutional rights, it will create a whole bag of worms for you if you do this. That's all I have to say on that issue, thank you.
So I have to maintain on constitutionality of a vice ordinance?
I, I don't think so. Absolutely, which, I think the council's will witness rights, legal rights to an act of ordinance or a crime.
This man, name of the address, please?
No, Dempsey, six, four. Listening to everything that was said, I, my caution is, for twelve and under, twelve to ride a bike on the sidewalk, and everyone else have to ride it in the street, over twelve years old, does the city or the council plan on doing anything about getting us bike lanes for these, you know?
Yeah, we are. It's, um, there's a huge project being run by the county to do some extensive bike lanes, which will require a lot of construction, uh, because of changing utilities, moving utilities, putting in drainage, and then there's another plan to do something a bit simpler, which is, uh, which would require just painting some lanes into the streets, so yeah, we are.
Okay.
I don't have the exact route out of my head, but we could get that to you.
Also, is, are those lanes geared just towards downtown, or is that citywide?
It'll, I think the main, the larger one is geared more from between Brooklyn and others through the downtown, part of downtown, and then the others are, are, uh, different parts of the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just, just one more quick question.
Hold on, we got someone on the side here.
Charles Cradell, Patterson Street, I just wanted to add my voice to the chorus of residents who think this law is overreaching, and I think that, um, we should be urging people to ride bicycles, uh, not the opposite, I think that this law, uh, without signage or, or really a campaign to let people know that the law is changing, is really going to be ineffective and confusing, and ultimately discourage people from riding bikes, which is something we should not be doing.
Yes, sir.
My, my last quick question was, um, wouldn't that constitute discriminatory ordinance, if you have people twelve and under can ride somewhere freely, but if you're thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, college student, you can't ride there freely, isn't that discrimination?
Uh, I don't think so.
Well, how isn't, you're discriminating based on age, that's clear.
Classification of various kinds, part of our legislative law, and that's classification of age based upon a assessment, I assume, of the safety hazards to younger children.
Okay, in response to that, actually, wouldn't that older person be more skilled at riding a bike than a younger person, therefore a safer rider, and the younger people be the unsafe rider? So that's not a good explanation.
I think, um, I don't think it's discriminatory, I think if you want to talk about being a better rider, wider, then it's more appropriate that he's in the street versus the sidewalk, where younger person stay on sidewalk, so I don't agree with your assessment there.
But if we're talking about safety issues that you just raised, the, the older rider is a safer rider, so the younger rider is less safe to ride on the sidewalk, that's the reason why the older rider is not supposed to be on sidewalk, you no longer have, that's not a valid reason, because the older rider can ride on sidewalk, it's much more safely than the younger rider.
That's your opinion, and obviously we disagree, and I respect your opinion, so.
Well, can you explain to me why do you believe a twelve-year-old?
That's what I believe, I don't know what you want me to tell you.
Reasonable explanation, we have to support your belief, is that what you have?
Yeah, if there's a, if he's a safer rider, and he's better, safer in the street, there's safety issues for pedestrians on the sidewalk, not necessarily bicyclists.
But how does, if a rider is a safe rider, not if he's in any danger to a pedestrian, he's a safe rider?
Uh, look, I've had my own experience with riders on the sidewalk, almost getting hit and run over, so I don't, I don't agree with you.
Okay. Do you want to? I just wanted to ask one question, um, Captain Milner, maybe you could help me, the only concern that I have is that on bicycle laws for the state, is it fourteen and over that they have to wear helmets and so forth, right?
Right.
If we do this at twelve, then we're putting a thirteen-year-old riding the bike on the street without being covered by the, with a safe, with a helmet and so forth, that's the only thing that I'm like a little bit.
I believe it's mandated at fourteen, but it's obviously encouraged at any age.
Because if we have twelve and older on the bicycle, the thirteen-year-old who's riding on the street, oh, without the, the helmet, if we don't mandate.
I believe, I'm sorry, I believe it's up to fourteen, so.
Up to fourteen, yes.
Uh, Mr. Patterson, I might have that.
Um, it's seventeen that you have to wear a helmet towards, and, uh, this ordinance doesn't affect whether a child has to wear a, a helmet or not. If someone is sixteen years old, they have to wear a helmet whether they're, we're riding it on the sidewalk, or they're riding it, uh, on the street. Um, I just also wanted to add, uh, for the, the reasons that we're, we're doing this, it's unsafe to ride on sidewalks. Uh, University of California did a study, um, about riding on the sidewalk, they found it was one point eight times more dangerous to be riding on the sidewalk than riding on the street, and if you were riding in the opposite direction of traffic on sidewalks, it was five point three times more dangerous to be riding on the sidewalk than riding in the street. New Jersey Department of Transportation guidelines for sidewalks and pedestrians, um, recommend that it is undesirable to have riding on sidewalk, with the exception of young children, and I believe they recommended that it was for children nine years and, and younger, we're raising it a little bit higher than that, to make it twelve years old. Uh, ASCO, which is the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials, their guidelines recommend, uh, against using sidewalks for cycling in at least three different, uh, separate locations, and ASCO cites that many national and state, uh, design manuals, uh, strongly caution against designating sidewalks, uh, for shared use. The reason they do this is that pedestrians are walking on the sidewalks at a much slower rate than a, than a cyclist would be, uh, walking down the sidewalk. Pedestrians and other people, uh, who might be on the sidewalk, uh, often make, uh, jerky movements to move out of the way, which are unpredictable, uh, cyclists often have difficulty avoiding them, and, um, pedestrians also often do not know which way the cyclist is going to go, and they're traveling at a much more rapid pace. It is also very dangerous when, uh, cyclists are crossing at intersections on the sidewalk, because they're not in a place where motorists are typically looking for them, they are more often blocked by things like hedges and, uh, street furniture, which make it much more dangerous for them to be, uh, riding on the sidewalk, which is why the ordinance is proposed the way it is.
Now, we, um, made a commitment to do a campaign in the community to teach, you know, let the community, uh, be aware of these changes, because I know many people don't know, especially with changing, we definitely have to take the responsibility of letting our community know, the residents know that this is coming on, what are the penalties and so forth, and I think that we should have been writing, that we're making a commitment that the city will do a bicycle campaign, however you want to call it, uh, once we, we start making these changes. Because I know in my community, even if you ask me, I wasn't aware of many of the things that, that I hear, so we need to really commit to that.
Mr. Garladi?
I can present your suggestion to the mayor. Certainly sounds very logical, and, uh, I would certainly present that to him, unless you want to do it yourself, but, um.
Because I'm a little bit, um.
Bicycle-aware.
Yeah, bicycle-aware and safety, and safety, because I'm a little bit, you know, uncomfortable approving the ordinance without having a campaign attached to it, at this point, because there's no way that, to me, it would be responsible of us to do that. That's my personal opinion.
Now, councilman, if I might, um, it's very unsafe to be riding on the sidewalk, it is several times more dangerous to be riding there, I think we ought to be doing everything we can to have people be riding in the safer, um, location, uh, particularly when cyclists are riding against the flow of traffic, it's very, very dangerous.
No, I agree, I'm not, I'm not debating the ordinance, I'm debating the fact that we need to do a community awareness campaign about it prior to me, prior of, of approving this, or along with it, you cannot approve this without announcing it to the community and make them aware of what are the new regulations. What can we do, some programs in the city have, they give helmets to kids, they put something in the community, so people need to know that, that there's agencies, there is something, that if you have any questions, come to certain places and get those answers.
You have a, Mr. Garladi?
Yes, Charles, excuse me, Charles Renner again, from Harvey Street, um, in, in reference to what Councilwoman Escobar is saying, um, I think that that campaign to notify residents ought to be extended to motorists too, because in this ordinance, you're placing a higher responsibility on motorists than is placed at, uh, by state law, and I think that motorists come and go in the city, we, we have a population of fifty, fifty-one thousand, but we probably have a hundred and fifty thousand people in and out of the city every day, maybe more than that, and how in the world is someone living in Somerset or, um, Metuchen going to know that, you know, you've got to yield to a bicycle, you've got to give them three feet clearance when you pass them?
So, so, so we should notify every motorist in New Jersey?
I'm saying you should have signs when you went to the city of New Brunswick, saying basically that motorists be aware that New Brunswick is bicycle safe, and, you know, that there are fines, uh, beyond, whatever, you know, you don't get that, so, a general campaign should not just go to the residents who are likely to be riding on the bicycles, but it should also go somehow to motorists who are going to be affected by this just as much. That's number one, number two, um, in reference to the young lady, excuse me, um, Mr. Dempsey, I think it was?
Yes.
In all fairness to, to your comments, Mr. President, um, I might note that for more than fifteen years, bike lanes have been considered by the county and the city of New Brunswick, and fifteen years later, obstacle after obstacle have been placed in their way, the latest one being the one you mentioned, utilities. Uh, the next one, who knows, the engineers may say there's not enough width in the road to put the bike lanes here, or bike lanes there, there, to my mind, there's no reasonable prospect of bike lanes being put in this city, not even in downtown, for years to come, and perhaps, that ought to be disclosed there, I'm sorry about my voice. And third, when you amend the, um, ordinance before you pass it, hopefully, to make sure that the court appearance is not required, uh, I would suggest that you also amend the purpose section, section ten point three six point zero one, purpose under section one, and delete the line which it says, "The intent of this chapter is to encourage greater use of bicycles as a means of transportation so as to reduce traffic congestion and greenhouse gas emissions." Seems to me this ordinance is going to do just the opposite, it's going to increase congestion on the roadways and slow down traffic, and therefore increase gas emissions as well.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just in support of what the council, uh, woman stated, as far as regarding the campaign to make sure that the citizens of this community are aware that this, uh, bike ordinance has even been passed, um, in my personal experience, uh, my son and a couple of his friends were actually stopped by police officers, issued tickets for the bike ordinance for riding a bike on the sidewalk. Um, they advised me of what happened, I researched the law, at this particular time, the ordinance had been repealed, I advised my son of this, accompanying him to municipal court, where the tickets were dismissed, um, once the evidence was presented that you can't enforce an ordinance that's been repealed. Um, but my sons and his friends were looking at the officers like they were crazy, like, what are you talking about, you can't ride a bike on the sidewalk? And they're seventeen, eighteen years old, so you need to have this campaign, because no one was even aware of it, and also, not only that, but you need the campaign for your officers, because obviously, if they don't know the law's been repealed, and as officers of the law, they're required to know the law, if they don't even know the law, how do you expect anybody else to know?
I want to, um, have a vote on this tonight, um, something we can do to fit the, for a campaign, but I don't want to keep telling this and, uh, going off on one.
I don't know what the police budget is like, that we would place the habit, uh, but I question even with all good intentions, whether or not people would attend.
That's another issue. Um, Mr. Garladi said he'll bring it up with the mayor?
I will do that tomorrow, if you'd like.
Then the PIO, we still have a PIO, without a press release, then we, they would bring some attention.
Very easy, it, it is not something that, that is going to take you lots of money, or lots of, you know, once you pass it, make sure people have school systems, you know, agencies in the city, so it's not something that you're going to have to create this whole campaign and make it a big, you know, eh, media or, or fiasco or a lot of money, it's something simple. Educate the school system, that's the best way you have, if you have any school system, they'll pass it out to the children, and the children will pass it off to the parents. There is local community-based organizations in town, let them know, you have to do English and Spanish, I know sometimes it's difficult, but, uh, uh, this has to be bilingual, if you have a challenge with that, I offer myself to do it. Uh, but we, we have to, you know, I don't think this is a major thing that, that, to me, that we asking, something as simple stuff, that we steps that we could take, that it doesn't take money, doesn't cost anything to do, it's just a matter of calling and giving the information out.
Hold on, I, I want to have this for vote now, so, uh, Mr. Clark? Do you remember the amendment?
Yes, I also.
The issue of, the amendment on the resolution to add the language for a new court, does it have to be done yet?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to move the resolution first?
I will, I move the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
This is just for that amendment, mine? Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye. And now for the ordinance? Motion.
I move the ordinance.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
No, without the consent of the community, okay.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye. We have ordinances on first read, O dash zero one one two zero one, in order to amend supplement, advise general orders to the city of New Brunswick, traffic control regulations for loading zone, add one loading zone at each street. Need motion?
Hold on.
Now, the, the, damn.
Oh, this is a, a, a second, the first read, I'm sorry, to set down the next council, February first, February first, two thousand twelve. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
Mr. Councilperson, if we could call the next one, um, there's a revised form of it there, in which the section having to do with crosswalks was deleted, because the engineering's not been done yet, nobody picks up a copy, they just look for one, it does not have a section on, um, crosswalks.
It will be done for the meeting?
Well, it's, there's some out there for part, but I'm just pointing out that there's two, there's two versions.
O dash zero one one two zero two, in order to amend supplement, advise general orders to the city of New Brunswick, taxi stands.
Motion.
I move the ordinance sitting down February first, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
O dash zero one one two zero three, in order to amend supplement, advise general orders to the city of New Brunswick, traffic and parking, delete, uh, delete and handicap parking zones and add handicap parking space, delete one residential handicap parking zone at five Freeman Street, add one residential handicap parking zone at five Freeman Street, these are different plaque of numbers which go with the individual, and add one residential parking space at one oh four Redmond Street. Motion.
I move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, February first, for public care, same date to be advertised.
Roll call. Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
O dash zero one one two zero four, in order to amend supplement, advise general orders to the city of New Brunswick, chapter two, that sixty-four.
Point sixty-four.
Two dot sixty-four, Department of Police, this is to, uh, we start, we start here, the auxiliary police department.
I move the ordinance sitting down Wednesday, February first, same date to be advertised.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Um, we have resolutions, R dash zero one one two four one, to R dash zero one one two one zero one. zero one, we're holding fifty-six, fifty-seven, sixty-five, I think I missed forty-eight, think forty-eight?
Twenty-one oh five.
And we hold number forty-three here, I'm sorry.
You gave it the top number, one one two one oh one, it's one one two one oh five.
I'm sorry, two one oh five. And we're holding forty-eight, fifty-six, fifty-seven, sixty-five, and holding forty-three, is that correct, that all?
I'm thirty-two ninety, the civil society.
Fifty-nine also, thank you. Anybody wish to comment on any of these resolutions? Yes, or name and address, please?
Computer security wants to know your name. R zero one one two six three, it's on page five, so your agenda. Computer services for tax assessors for twelve twelve? I think that's an error, should that be twenty twelve? Yes. Is that your resolution budgeting?
Yeah, resolutions quite correct, it's one on page. Anybody else have any resolutions, Mr. Randle?
Charles Randle, Harvey Street. Out of curiosity, why are we paying four, I'm sorry, twelve hundred dollars for a forty gallon boiler, resolution number two six seven? Seems to me that should be about six or seven hundred dollars.
We asked Mr. Bell if I could speak to that.
I can tell you that Nastis Brothers replaced a similar tank at the library and charged us approximately eleven hundred dollars. I do not know why those prices are that, I'm not in the business, but, but two different vendors are within this, say, open range.
Was that competitive with it?
Was that, Mr. Rockland, exactly? You know, that was big and that was a hacky bid?
No.
If it, at that dollar amount, it does not have to be bid, it was a standalone project, but this was managed as part of an ongoing redevelopment of the, or renovation of the entire building. But if we were replacing a twelve hundred dollar tank tomorrow, we would take three proposals, it would not have to go to bid though.
One, two words, Home Depot, thank you.
Anyone else?
Excuse me, is this just on the reorganization matters or a whole? Okay, so I'll start with the reorganization matters, I have here, it's like seventeen different resolutions that are, that all say fair and open under them, so that means those were all publicly bid contracts, is that correct?
It's really more a request for proposal, it's not a strict bid. They're like, the submitters that are put in their qualification, they're going to comply with what the invitation to bid or proposal calls for, and then the choice is made based upon price and quality and a lot of other factors, in accordance with the statutes.
Sure, so I guess I'll save the time of going individually, could you tell me, how many of the seventeen received more than one submission, more than one response to the RFP?
She is, I don't know if she knows that all, and Joanne Hughes, she's left. I could give you that information before you leave. Certainly, seventeen different summaries of the proposals we received and opened and evaluated.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious how many of them, if you only have one bid, it doesn't, probably not very fair or open.
You know that it's always fair.
Well, speaking of marketing campaigns, maybe we could do a better job of marketing those, those things. Moving on, I wanted to ask about the rock salt, seventy-nine thousand dollars for rock salt, how does this compare with last year's?
So far, we've been pretty good this year.
I would say it's very close to the same value. The water utility takes a very small piece of that contract to keep its plant and pump stations free of ice, the rest of it, the lion's share of that contract is with DPW, my experience is that that's a similar contract for last year.
And the temporary, emergency temporary appropriations for twenty-twelve, is that just a standard budgeting thing because of the calendar?
Yes, we established a temporary budget at the last meeting and we're adding some money to a couple of departments who are entering into some large commitments like the water utility. As you can see, there's a very expensive purchase of chemicals for the year, we needed a little more money to certify funds for that purpose.
Okay, moving on, number ninety-four, this is block ninety-four, lot one point zero two, can they tell me where this particular block is?
Seven thirty-five. George and Paul.
Okay. And, and so what exactly is being looked into, this, this study to determine?
This is the New Brunswick Theological Seminary, the seminary is trying to secure its financial future for another, you know, few decades, hundred years, whatever, they've been in town for over two hundred years, they're trying to capture more of the value of the land that they have up there, they also have a number of dilapidated buildings on the site, some of which are boarded up, and they're looking to get new academic facilities, they're also looking to try to build some new housing on the site for both their people and potentially other persons who could live on site, provide some amenities on the site, like open space areas, public plazas and so forth, things like that, so this is the first step in being able to go along that, that process.
I'm sorry, Charles.
This is the New Brunswick Seminary on, between college, seminary, bishop, and George.
I, I guess I won't ask, because ninety-nine was held, is that correct? I wasn't sure.
That's a repeat.
Yes, there was.
Oh, so that's why it was held, it never even passed, okay, that's what I thought. And then Bravo Supermarket's already been answered, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else on any of the resolutions?
Move the resolutions? Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Councilmember Racine?
Aye.
Any correspondence, Mr. Clark? Does any councilman wish to address? Anybody from the public wish to address the council?
Yes, sir. Around the end of October two thousand eleven, I went to Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office without problems I was having with Internal Affairs. Lieutenant Del Bago contacted Lieutenant Miller to advise him that the Internal Affairs investigation would be concluded, pending the outcome of my upcoming criminal proceeding. On or about November fourth, two thousand eleven, I received a status update letter from Lieutenant Miller stating the conclusion of the investigation is pending the outcome of my criminal proceeding scheduled for November ninth, two thousand eleven. The criminal proceeding ended in my favor, where I was found not guilty of criminal obstruction. And since Lieutenant Miller stated that the conclusion of the investigation was pending the outcome of the criminal proceeding, once I was found not guilty, I expected to hear the conclusion of receiving a right. I didn't. Almost six more weeks passed without a response from Lieutenant Miller or anyone from Internal Affairs. Consequently, I wrote a letter to, to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office advising Lieutenant Del Bago of my negative experience with the New Brunswick Internal Affairs and requested he investigate these matters in the interest of justice. However, to date, I have not received any response. My two Internal Affairs complaints were filed way back in May and July of two thousand and ten, it's now the middle of January two thousand and twelve. After one year and eight months, the investigations are still not completed and no one is willing to openly explain to me why. So consequently, I'm now requesting that the city council assist me in resolving this matter.
After that, can you just follow up on this?
I don't know the gentleman's name, I'm sorry.
Can you just give it to him, sir?
Yes, sir, Aaron Chabas.
Chabas.
Oh, I'd like to know, Aaron Chabas.
Yeah, have you, has he tried contacting Lieutenant Miller recently?
He's saying yes. Have you done it recently, sir?
Yes, I sent via certified mail, I have all the green cards, they just don't respond.
Make sure we get an answer, you deserve an answer. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
No, Mr. Dempsey, six one, I'm just, you know, piggybacking off of what he said, I had my son in here today, and I have a complaint in Internal Affairs with New Brunswick Police Department from two thousand and seven, that has still been ongoing, and, you know, it hasn't played out in court, it, it's a back and forth thing with Lieutenant Miller, and I talked to, I forget the other gentleman up there, I think his last name started with D. And, and New Brunswick, yes, I went to Chris Cooperack, I went, I, I, it's an ongoing issue with Internal Affairs, I actually have five complaints dating back from two thousand and seven, probably as early as two thousand and nine, and in those two years, five complaints, and dealing with different issues with New Brunswick Police Department, and, and the one issue that is really bothering me that's still out there is the complaint from two thousand and seven, where I actually got to the scene of the incident and had three officers had my son held down on the ground, and two officers standing in front of him, kicking him in the face while his hands was behind his back, in which I jumped out of my vehicle while it was still moving, and intervened in everything that happened, along with a couple of other people from the community, of course, nobody else was charged, and he was charged with resisting arrest, but they don't have ground bases for why he was actually arrested to be resisting arrest. I think there is an issue, an ongoing issue, I know there is an ongoing issue with Internal Affairs that needs to be looked at, I'm not sure if this is the correct form in which to bring it to, but we're here and I'm bringing it.
Do, do, you need, have you not, someone not gotten back to you on any of your requests that are called?
Constantly. This, this is, this is, we're in two thousand and twelve. This has been since two thousand and seven, and I don't have a problem, I don't have any charges, I don't have any of that stuff, I don't have a problem going to wherever I need to go to to speak my mind very boisterous, you know, just trying to get help to, you know, whether they feel like he right or wrong, or was right or wrong, it was for the court to decide, who chose, chose not to decide, so, you know, still in the interest of the community, they're here to help us, and they're not.
This may, I, I just wanted to respond to that, I don't know your son's name, but just for your information, one of the things the mayor has done is, is to appoint me as the community liaison officer, and this is one of the more important things that I will be doing, is to address these kinds of complaint, Internal Affairs complaints that could have been made from two thousand and three until two thousand and eleven. So if you can talk to me afterwards, give me your name, your son's name, when you made the complaint, those kind of things, and I will promise you I will get back to you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Cradwell?
I just wanted to ask, while we're on the topic of Internal Affairs, so folks who have a complaint from, how far back can file?
Three.
From two thousand and three to two thousand and eleven, anyone can file a complaint, and should, should they?
No, what we have, if you recall back in October, the mayor made, in a press release and in a meeting, he said that what we were going to be doing is because of the whole issue with Richie Rowe, when he was, was the Internal Affairs Director back in two thousand and three, generally first two thousand and three until October twelfth, two thousand and eleven, there were about eighty-one complaints that were made in Internal Affairs. So for those people who could, who felt they could have made a complaint, but for whatever reason, didn't feel any confidence in making that complaint, we have established a civilian hearing process where they can come, make their hearing, make their complaint before a hearing officer, and then from that point, it would be investigated by the police department and the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. Now, anybody after that, of course, they can make, they, they're free to make their complaint either in this process or in Internal Affairs itself, but for those people specifically from that period, two thousand and three to two thousand and eleven, who could have, who believed that they could have filed a complaint, we've established a process where they can do that.
Okay, and how would they enter that process, just talk to you, or?
Right, the mayor will be making an announcement about that, but generally, yes, they can contact me, we've set up office hours, a phone number, where we'll be taking information from people, and we'll have a hearing process and a hearing officer who will take that complaint.
Great, so what's the phone number and one of the office hours?
I do, the telephone number is seven three two, seven four five, five zero two six.
And the office hours?
The office hours would be every Thursday afternoon from one to four.
In this building?
Well, actually, I'm going to be in my office at ninety-six Patterson Street.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, that was helpful. So keeping with the police matters, I wanted to ask for an update on police residency, I know the council's been pursuing that.
I have given couples some suggestions on some of the lines, yeah, we just have cleared on, is it? I want to make sure we have people, at least a mover and a second to what you want, like any supply, which we did, and that, and we went through the, the thing I asked you to remove as far as saying, three to five, seven miles outside of town, which are, looks to be taken out.
That's easy enough to take out if we have, if two people want to take it out.
That's no problem. So can we get it back on for the, to work first?
Wonderful, thank you. I also wanted to ask for an update on televised meetings, I kind of asked about this at the last meeting, but didn't, didn't get quite an answer, how, how much work would it be to get this very same video that's being shot right now put on cable vision so folks without the internet can watch it?
I don't have an answer for your, that's my fault, and, do we have any cable television advisor committee meetings coming up, or?
I'll have to look at the schedule, but I can't tell you as I sit here.
Okay. I'd like to go do the process we did before, where the cable television advisor committee, I'm sure we have any new members this term or not, to do the recommendation as we did last time to the council, and then present it to, especially to two new council members, and get, then do what we did last time, we had a vote from the council.
My understanding is that there's only two members on the committee right now, you're one of them, so I'll volunteer my services if you need extra personnel.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
But, yeah, I'd like to see that super right area, I think this is the year we can get those meetings on television. Moving on to other issues, I, I have to ask, does anybody know where Councilman Cook has been?
He has some personal health issues that he's taking care of.
And the taxi stand was, that's the Little Albany site that was?
That's one of them, there's three total ones, were existing on George and Somerset, one in front of the, on Albany, two in front of the train station, and a third one on Little Albany.
Oh, I see, so these are three alternatives, there's three taxis there, okay, so just let me get those again, Little Albany and what were the other two?
Little Albany, George, Somerset, and where it exists now, and then in front of the train station on, on Albany, what I said, on Albany, in front of the train station.
Okay, thank you, that clears. I wanted to ask if anybody has an update on the new parking lot the authority is opening at Plum and Somerset.
Mr. Patterson, can I come back?
I don't have any update on the construction status, I've seen that they're, they're doing work over there, they're moving forward with that, that's a temporary lot that the parking authority is doing as a development project for that site wasn't, isn't imminent there, so Mr. Karen thought it would be helpful for the neighborhood to have a surface parking lot there for, for time to provide for residents, I believe it will be a metered lot during the day, I believe it will be free parking in the evening.
Okay, I think they're just waiting on the, to see something, but last question would be, I was, I missed the first meeting of December, but I know Mr. Keith Jones came and, and made some extensive remarks, has anything happened as a result of that, has any action been taken, is council looking into his, his claims?
No action has been taken, we listened, I don't know exactly what we can do, I did speak to the superintendent, but as of right now, there's nothing scheduled, I'm not quite sure where it is in the legal system part of it, so.
And I just wanted to close by commending the council for moving forward with the auxiliary police program, I, I think it's a great thing, it's going to... I, I think it's a great thing, it's gonna hopefully provide, uh, you know, job training to people who can put that to work, either being a police officer or, or in private security, uh, as well as boost the, the perception of safety in, in town, so, um, I think it's a great initiative and I commend the council.
I know the, it was an article in the paper today, but for people out here, I would encourage you, tell anybody you know who may be interested in that to take advantage of the program and sign up and, uh, and, uh, and do it.
The obligation is online already, so people could, I know the newspaper won't hide it, and, um, and I think that we should thank also the police director who put a lot of effort into making this happen, so I just wanted to, uh, say that on the record.
And I also want to add, people should also know that there is a deadline, because the campaign starts, um, March, no, the deadline for the submission.
What's the deadline for submission?
The application's had to be by February eighteenth, because it starts in March, it's a process that has to be completed.
Hope you spread the word, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Uh, just to follow from, uh, the question about Mr. Jones, uh, are you gonna pursue it, or are we just gonna let it go like that?
Honestly, I'm not quite sure what we can do with the council, I did talk to Mr. Patterson, um, and of course, you know, there's a whole history there between, so it wasn't, um, productive, but maybe like after the meeting, I could talk to you and...
Because I followed, not to cut you off, I followed the whole procedure, the court and everything, and, uh, Mr. Kaplan is only here in the city hired by taxpayers of the city of New Brunswick, he's not the king of the school system. And as far as I'm concerned, is that we need a new superintendent, and, uh, I wouldn't want this process to be like the Internal Affairs process, where if somebody asks for something, and then we'll get back to it, even I've made Internal Affairs complaints, and I haven't got anything happen. So, I understand these are policy issues, and no sense in me sitting here, you know, asking you this and that. My question will be to you, to the clerk, what is the process for a recall election against the mayor of the city of New Brunswick?
Set forth in the Jersey statutes. Title nineteen, I believe. Maybe a federal...
Can we be a little more clear about that? Because if we be based on the last election, we've had problems with elections, there's always fraud, voting in these elections, no sense in us playing around, and I'm not playing around with you, you know? I'm asking you, what is the process? When it comes down to how many votes, the procedure, uh, on a recall election, because we are listening to problem after problem, dysfunction is, after dysfunction is here every time I come here, and no sense in us playing around, there's some issues here. And there's issues with policy, and he is the policymaker, the agenda was made before I came in here. The city council can only do so much, and so always we gotta get back to him. For the last twenty years that he's been mayor of the city of New Brunswick, me as an African, African American, know that back in nineteen eighty-six, when I first ran for mayor of the city of New Brunswick, we had about twenty-five thousand African Americans in the city of New Brunswick. Fast forward to two thousand and twelve, we'd be lucky to have about eight. As I ride around this city, and it seems like the changes have been made to favor the rich. You know, my wife told me the other day, we're just riding, just gonna end it like this, and we're riding in the car, and when I first got, first got married, ran in the election, I'm a cop, this and that, trying to do things fair. And the morning of the election, we got in the car, getting ready to go to breakfast, you know, to start the campaign, went down the street, found out the tires had been cut. Then she went on to say, there's a lot of issues, and she just, well, she was just going over stuff, because whatever happens to me and I'm involved in, happens to her too. Similar to Mr. Jones, he called me every day. There's something wrong with the system. We used to talk about, is this the year sixteen twelve, or is this the year twenty twelve? You know, Jim Crow? Because it seems to be a total disregard for African Americans in the city of New Brunswick. And that's my opinion. And it was something like this, there was a, I was watching television the other day, and there was a naval, uh, uh, person working on the ship in World War Two, and the ship was bombed by Japanese. And, and at that time, African Americans were just serviced to the white officers. And the ship got bombed and almost sunk, but the African American took care of the whole ship and saved everybody. He had to wait till he was ninety-five years old to get some type of recognition for that. Now, I know that things are just passed down the channel because no one's families there. Sometimes people just don't have no, they just have disregard for people. I've come into this community and spoke to you about the gang problems, which I was charged one time as a police officer, trying to help the gangs, back in nineteen eighty-nine. And we had listened, fast forward, we would have a problem. It's like African Americans just don't have no expertise, no say in nothing, because we always seem to be seen as service people. We're just there for service. And that's the sad thing about it, that the African Americans and some that we have, they see it that way too. Because when I'm in this room, and I've been here a long time, I don't actually see nobody taking the case. You can run to this one, run to that one, see what happens, I've never seen no action. And I don't even have to be in the room with the mayor to, to think that somebody's in there fighting for the African American community. And I'm not saying all of yous don't care, but I'm saying that the Jim Crow, uh, uh, methods are still here, and I will be pursuing them. And I know, uh, the last time Mr. Jones was up there, we viewed the videotape, and we could see the faces of the council as he was talking. You know, people just don't, they just wanna do what they own money, it's like a bad kid. No matter what you tell the kid, you're trying to tell them something for their own good, they just wanna do it their way, regardless of who they hurt. Because the only thing they care about is their own selfishness. And that's all I have to say. So I would like it that Mr. Kaplan be told two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, or for twenty thousand dollars a month, like the police director, who not him, he had to do it, right? That some of these people pay to play. When's somebody gonna get paid for the work they do? And that pay to play system, did everybody pay for their little positions, this and that? That's one of the main things that's ruining the integrity of this country. Very few people I know have actually did any work, but I see they pay campaign donations to get a position, and I think that's one of the main reasons why this city is in a pay shit decision right now.
Anyone else? Will we jerk?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Council vice president Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council president Racine?
Aye.